Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cordova Recreation and Park District's Regular Board Meeting Wednesday, January 15th, 2020 at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Dre White, our new office manager.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't go anywhere. So I have the honor and privilege of introducing to you our new office manager, Dre White. As many of you remember, she worked with the district as an office assistant at the district office from 2013 to 2015. Since leaving us in 2015, she left to pursue her undergraduate studies out of state. Dre has lived in Idaho, Utah, and Texas. And just over a month ago, she and her family moved back to California and she returned to us here at the main office. She has eight years of administrative experience and will be a great help for our growing district. So welcome Dre, and we're really happy to have you here.
Ms. Jones, roll call?
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Director Reyes?
Here.
Secretary Lineback?
Here.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Here.
And Chair Danzel?
Here. At this time, does the board have any disclosures on action items? Seeing none, let's move on to Section B, comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I do not have any speaker cards at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Let's move on to Item C, consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have three items for your consideration. And I do have a note for the record, a note to change the draft minutes on page seven of your board package. The final minutes will reflect that the district staff purchased the gift cards for homeless students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any comments, questions on any of the consent calendar? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar items C1, C2, and C3.
I have a motion by Director Yearwood and a second by Director Reyes. Roll call?
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to presentations.
Thank you. Item D1 is a presentation by staff on the 2019 district year-end review. And I'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Gadel.
Ta-da. Alright, so this is a joyous moment, my favorite of the year, this item. So when we get to stop, take a moment, take a deep breath, and appreciate all the cool things that we did, right? But before we get into all that, we first want to thank outgoing Chair Yearwood for all your dedication and time and your demeanor, and most importantly, your short meetings. We really appreciate that. It was awesome. Personally, I want to thank Lineback and Reyes for being part of the Budget and Finance Committee. We get an opportunity to see each other outside of these meetings. And I really appreciate all the dialogue and the philosophy discussions that we have and make sure that we're on track, because it was the best financial year that we had to date. Woo, yeah. So thank you for your help and assistance and all that. And so Vice Chair Sloan and Chair Danzel, the bar's been set. The gauntlet thrown, right? And so every year, we get better and better. And so we expect big, big things this year. So we look forward to your leadership as well. And finally, General Manager Larkin, thank you for the environment and the culture that you have instilled in us. You give us an opportunity to be ourselves, and with that, we're able to get a lot done and do it in an enjoyable way. So we have a video of all those cool things that we put together. So thank you very much. And last but not least, of course, there's a poem, right? Started this last year. I know, here we go again, right? So Katie and I put something together.
This wasn't my idea.
It's all her idea.
There goes the short meeting.
Alright. 2019, this year, we accomplished, we engaged, we rewarded, we introduced, we led, and shouted.
We accomplished.
Pavement management and ADA compliance were a priority. Amazing what a little concrete and love can do, even adding in a little library. Memorial benches put in place for community members gone too soon. Planting trees for employees' retirement that will flourish and bloom. Positive changes at the golf course with new carts, aerated greens, and beer. New staff and pro shop makeover, could this be the year? Mather Sports Center saw changes as well, from ceiling to floor. The King Slumston joined the party, and you can hear the kids roar.
We engaged.
Community engagement was the move, all day and all night. Town hall meetings and public input collected, so we get it right. Ribbon cuttings, mayor's walk, Amgen and CRPD booths galore. Appreciation of pickles delivered, events of machines, park parties, and Halloween gore. So many staff gave back to those in need with gift cards and food as we should. This agency is filled with kindness and always striving to be the good.
We were rewarded.
Awards were given for this and for that, from left and from the right. Well, of course so, because our parks are fantastic and freaking tight.
We introduced.
New programming like STEAM, arts, theater, and zumbini. We welcomed new staff at wellness lunches that included carrots and zucchini.
We led.
Planning Manager Laura Taylor was crowned the Staff Person of the Year. Yeah, that is about the coolest thing you and I could possibly hear.
We shouted.
The past year flew by so very fast. Goodbye, 2019. So let's sit back, watch this video, because it was real and not a dream. It's all Katie. So yeah, we really want to thank Rick Manis, too, for a lot of those pictures that were taken. Yeah, they were so good. As a matter of fact, I think that leads us to the next item. It's a great year, everybody.
Truly, this video and really a lot of the marketing that we did this entire year would not have been possible without the amazing Rick Manis, who has come out to all of our events and programs, worked with countless recreation staff in order to make these possible. If you've seen our website, our guide, I mean, it's stunning and amazing. So would love to present him with this certificate of appreciation, just because of everything that you do, which is so fantastic. So can we give a big round of applause for Rick?
Thank you.
So great. And so if you have anything you'd like to say, you're more than welcome to.
Okay.
No pressure. Go for it.
Thank you. Well, this is wonderful recognition, but I have to tell you that I've really, the pleasure has been mine. I took a couple of photographs back in the mid-'70s on a trip that I enjoyed. And I thought, I want to do this. But then life and the non-photographic career got in the way. And so now that I've retired, I can, I'm making up for lost time. And so Katie and all of you have given me the opportunity to really have a good time and make some nice pictures. It's been a pleasure to do, to discover all the facilities that our park district has. I am thoroughly jealous of your splash park. We never had anything like that when I was a kid. But so many, you've got the barn and the animals, and we never had anything like that either when I was a kid. So my hat's off to all of you. It's been a pleasure to work with you. You've been good sports, right? I mean, a number of your quorum, actually, I think there's, no, actually, I think I've gotten everybody on the board. And you've all been good sports in letting me take your photos, and so many of the staff as well. Including Jill, who I got with Santa Claus. And so she was a good sport as well. I don't know what was on her Christmas list, but as Santa flew off, I thought I heard something about a million-dollar Parks grant. I'm not, I'm not really sure. But it could be. It doesn't hurt to ask. Anyway, so it's been my honor and pleasure to work with you all, and I hope to continue doing it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rick. Item E, committee reports. It looks like we have none. Public hearings, also none. So let's move on to Item G, regular calendar.
Thank you. Item G1 is to approve the release of a request for proposals for the Primrose Park Playground Replacement Project. And I'd like to introduce landscape architect Christina James.
Good evening, Chair Danzel and members of the board. Back to business now. So tonight, we're bringing before you a request for proposals. This is for the Primrose Park Playground, for your review and approval. On September 24th, 2019, the district held a community meeting at Primrose Park to discuss a potential playground renovation project and gather community feedback. The neighbors were in support of the project. And through some visual sticker survey boards, we were able to gather specific feedback from the community on exactly what types of playground equipment they were looking for. This request for proposals that we're putting out is seeking both multiple playground designs and cost estimates from a team of a certified playground installer and a manufacturer. So it's a unique, really, design-build method that we're trying out. It's been reviewed by our legal department and approved as to form. If this RFP is a successful process, it may serve as a template for us as we move forward for future playground renovations. And our proposed schedule is that we will be receiving proposals and reviewing them from the teams and hope to bring the best designs before the community in the spring. And then, based on their feedback, whittle it down to a successful proposal, which then we would bring for the board's approval in conjunction with the 2021 budget. So if you have any questions regarding either the community meeting process or the specific RFP process, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that the Board of Directors approve the release of a request for proposal, RFP, for the Primrose Park Playground Replacement Project.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Director Reyes and a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye. Thank you. Let's move on to Item G2.
Thank you. Item G2 is to approve the Williamson Property Master Plan, and I'll turn it back over to Christina.
Thank you, Danielle. In 2011, the Cordova Rockin Park District accepted the parcels donated by the Williamson family. In 2018, the district hired Roach and Campbell to facilitate a series of public workshops and create a master plan based on community input for the site. Roach and Campbell successfully led well-attended workshops in the community. And the master plan that is a result of that community feedback is before you tonight for your review and approval. The community feedback was clear and consistent, and our consultant is here in the audience and will be speaking later a little bit in more detail, both about the community meeting process and the master plan that came out of that. I also wanted to talk a little bit tonight to the board about throughout this process, the partnerships that occurred. We were, we worked in close partnership with the city of Rancho Cordova. We kept them informed throughout the process. They also provided free tree survey for us. Their city arborists provided a survey, which helped to inform the design. We partnered with SAC Tree, kept them in the loop, and they will be helping us both with tree plant material for the future construction and also volunteers, and also tree recommendations. So they've been a valuable partner as well. And then another partner has been the Rancho Cordova Police Department, and specifically their SEPTED group, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. We've received feedback from them in terms of how to design the sites so that it's safe and secure. This was a concern brought to us from neighbors. They wanted to make sure that there was visibility, that the site was designed with safety in mind. And to that effect, they have helped and will continue to help us in reviewing the construction documents and making sure that the site is designed well. The terms of the lease and deed for this property, these properties, discuss the naming of the sites. So they're very specific with regard to what the family desired. So there will be, the parcel deeded to the district shall be called WH Williamson Park, and there will be a sign on that parcel to that effect. The parcel leased to the district shall be called DL Williamson Park, and there will be a sign placed on that site that must meet with the family's approval. We have a preliminary cost estimate that was prepared by our consultant, and that indicates an approximate estimate of 1.5 million for the complete build of this new parcel, these new parcels. We are recommending that that be phased. We're anticipating that we will be bringing a first phase in the 2021 budget year. And then, in subsequent years, that project will be phased, approximately three phases. As we continue with the process, we may discover grant opportunities or other funding sources that would help to fund the construction of this park. So with that, I would like to introduce our consultant, David Campbell, with the firm Roach and Campbell, a landscape architect, who will talk, who has been extraordinary help to us. And we'll talk more about both the master plan and the community meeting outreach process.
Thank you, Christina. Good evening, and thank you for having me, Chair, and members of the board. Oh, there we go. Excellent. Sure, thank you. Thank you. And Matt and Katie, you guys are a hard act to follow. I have neither a poem nor a video, so I hope you weren't expecting that again. We're very grateful to have been a part of this process. Granted, this is a small facility compared to many other facilities in the district. But we thought that it would be best to identify a very strongly community-based process to come up with a master plan for this, for these two parcels. The very first step in talking with staff, we felt was a listening session. Many of the residents in this area have been there over 30 years. It's an established community that surrounds these two parcels. And there's, in addition, a lot of history to the parcels and the community itself. We had a three-step process. The first was the listening session, in which we had just under 80 people attend. So it was very well-attended. I recognized several members of the board from that meeting as well. So we were open-ended in this. We had a frank discussion. We had a We had a little bit of framing to identify the context and what might be appropriate within the district's guidelines for these two parcels. And then we really opened the floor. In some cases, this meeting served to introduce the district to the residents that you serve, and that was a very good introduction. We got a lot of good feedback from this, and Christina highlighted some of those elements. We certainly heard concerns about security, about the type of use that would occur on these two parcels. We took that information into our next meeting, only after hearing from the community first. Then we took that back and developed three concepts. As Christina mentioned, we also got input from the city. The city arborist was very helpful, Rancho Cordova Police as well, to develop the three concepts. And we did more than one concept because we wanted to compare and contrast each of these to try to pull out the best elements of all of them. And so we did that through another visual preference survey, and you can see the results. These were the three sketch concepts that were presented. We walked through with the community elements of these in terms of programming, what activities might take place, what areas of space had been designated for paths or demonstration gardens or gathering areas. And we showed some pictures of what some of those elements might look like. And from that, we also had a great discussion at the second community meeting, and it was very clear that Concept B, which is in the upper right, was the favorite, but we also pulled in elements from the others. The community really did express a desire for some symmetry and something of a gateway into their neighborhood. And so we feel that this project will provide everything that they asked for in terms of passive uses, enhancing the aesthetics of the corner and the local neighborhood, and providing a place for all those partner organizations, which Christina mentioned, to demonstrate some of the best practices, whether that's pruning or small orchard trees, or demonstrating native plants and pollinator gardens. So all of those elements together were brought into the master plan, in which you can see both parcels have a somewhat similar appearance so that they are unified, but they also have unique uses. Firstly, we think it's important that this, these two parcels will provide street trees and shade, both to the existing sidewalk and to the areas internally. This will be a place for people to walk, to observe native and adapted plantings, and to see natural processes like stormwater treatment and retention onsite, and see how they might even apply those ideas in their own yards. We're also very excited that the Sacramento Tree Foundation has expressed an interest in partnering and has committed to donating trees to showcase some of the shady 80 trees that are so important in both our local neighborhood and in our community. I'm going to move on to a couple of enlargements to showcase a few of the unique aspects of each parcel, but before I do, I also want to point out that overall, there's about a quarter-mile of walking paths between the two parcels and a few additional areas of decomposed granite meandering walkways through the demonstration planting areas. On the left-hand side, which we call the southwest, this will be primarily demonstration garden. We are retaining a majority of the trees onsite. Some of the trees are really at the end of their life, and they need to be removed for structural reasons and for safety reasons, but we intentionally designed around the existing trees, which are shown with a few more branches than the others. On this left parcel, we'll introduce stormwater retention and a stormwater garden and elevated boardwalk and showcase those natural processes. On the right-hand parcel, it's a little bit more open because it provides opportunity for those partner organizations to do future projects, whether that's community gardens or a demonstration orchard. And it also includes bike parking and retains the existing historical monument. Surrounding both parcels will be a new masonry wall that'll provide security and a visual barrier, because there are residential properties which back up onto these two parcels. And the walking paths will provide a shaded respite for neighbors. Moving in from concept to reality, as Christina mentioned, we are looking at phasing this project, and the phases and the dates are somewhat conceptual at this point, only because we want to leave room for those partnerships to solidify and the opportunity for additional grant funding. But potentially, this could be building utilities and then building one parcel and then building the opposite parcel. And with that, if you have any questions or comments, I'd be glad to answer them.
Board, questions, comments?
Oh, I just have one comment. I'm just really happy to hear we're not, you know, cleaning the slate and ripping everything out that we're keeping some of the trees from the original orchard that was there. So very happy to see that.
Chair Danzel, we do have one speaker card.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome to the podium Keith Johnson, please.
Good evening. I just came to see what transpired after all these years. And I must say, I'm very pleased with the work the board and the staff have done and the consultant. You came and asked us what we wanted, and you're giving it to us. I do have one thing I'd like to ask. The board could leave a place in case the local homeowners association would like to put a sign as you're entering the neighborhood. That would be on the northeast parcel, just to keep, keep open to the idea. I'm not even sure if the HOA will ever get around to asking, but, and other than that, I just wanted to say, this is my third board meeting I've been to for the Park District in the 16 years I've lived in the community, and just really pleased with how this district has come along. You've been, you've made some bold decisions, asking for the property tax money, and you got it, and you're putting it to good use. Also, I work in local government, so I understand a lot of the challenges you have, and you probably don't hear this type of words from citizens enough, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Chair Danzel, I would like to comment to Mr. Anderson? Johnson. I wanted to thank you. I've been to the community meetings that we've done, and it's, it's not only the fact that when we run it, the neighbors were there, residents were there. That was very impressive. Secondly, I've seen you, I've heard you give your comments, I've heard you say, "This won't work, this will work," and I think that's very important to us. So I wanted to thank you for being able to be honest and help contribute to the fact that this is supposed to be for the community. So it makes me very pleased that we're able to deliver parts here that we can literally say, "You guys said you wanted." And so I wanted to thank you for participating. It's very important that you do. Thank you.
I have a question.
Question.
The riparian drainage. I love water. I love the whole idea of having water. Would this be something that, like, water lilies would be growing in, or some type of water plants, or is it just a drainage feature that fills up and then you lose the water?
The latter, yeah, because this, it's relatively dry in the majority of the year, but the idea is that when we get rainfall, all of that, rather than being piped directly to a storm drain and then out to the river, it would have a chance to infiltrate and recharge the groundwater.
Oh, cool. Interesting.
We actually had a good discussion on our tour of the property last week about that exact question about the water, because we do have, obviously, the concern with mosquito and vector control. So we had a great discussion about that, and I think we came up with a good solution so we don't have standing water at any time that would attract mosquitoes.
Well, let's put some type of little fish in it and have water lilies and make a fountain.
Unfortunately, it's not that big of a park.
So I could paint, like, Manet. Or is it Monet, I guess? Monet did the water lilies. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's move.
I have a couple of questions. So we're told here that the family has verbally stated its intention to donate the leased parcel in 80 years, but they would have no control over their descendants a couple generations from now. So I'm a tiny bit concerned about how much money we would put into a property, enhance its value, and then have to hand it back.
So when we're phasing this project, we will first start on the deeded property side of the two parcels, which is the southwest side. And in, once we get this going, there is a plan for us to have another meeting with the Williamson family to discuss whether we're going to invest further into that property and the conditions to which we would do so, which would be an ask at that time if we were to invest, that we would ask to see if they could turn over to the deed instead of a leased property in order for us to move forward. But that is a part of Phase Two, really. We want to activate the deeded property first, so that's how we would approach the project.
Was there ever any conversation about other use for that other parcel?
No. In the deed and the agreement that we have with the family, they expected us to develop it as a park, but they said that they would lease it after 80 years. They wanted to see a product developed and delivered in order for them to make that decision.
And will there be irrigation on that?
We might not be here.
Property for the trees and?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And lastly, you know, I'm no landscape architect for sure, and these drawings show a lot of cover, but of course, it's a satellite view, if you will. So with regard to the security, will those trees be tall enough to have sort of a line of sight through the park?
The answer to that is also yes, and we had discussed that internally, and then in addition, Christina met with the City of Rancho Cordova Police Department to discuss those concerns specifically, and we will not have larger shrubs that could afford a hiding place.
Is there, is there any light at all in the park?
Yes, we are planning for about a half-foot candle, which is very low-level pedestrian light, and it's also, per current energy standards, dimmable after a certain time period. I think that's 10:00 PM.
Nice. Great.
Any other questions, comments? I apologize for that. Secretary?
I want to just thank David for all of his work. I think he did such a fantastic job as our facilitator for this public outreach meeting, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for all your work. He did a fantastic job, and we really appreciate it.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. So hearing no more questions or comments, do I have a motion?
I will move that the Board of Directors approve the Williamson Property Master Plan.
I have a motion by Secretary Lineback.
I'll second it. I have a second by Director Yearwood.
Roll call.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Let's move on to item?
Now we look for money and grants.
Item H, Board of Directors' items.
Thank you. Item H1, there was no board training over the last period, so item H1B is Board Member Reports.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Let's start down with Director Yearwood.
Was Whitney Houston once saying, "I got nothing"?
Thank you very much, sir. Did she say that? Director Reyes?
Yes. Chair Danzel, I would like to say that I attended the all-staff recognition holiday party on the 19th of December, and it was very, very, not only well-attended, the whole celebratory theme was there. It was really, it felt really good, and I think the morale of our staff, they're proud that they've produced and that they've maintained, and they're proud of their work. So I did want to commend staff and General Manager Larkin, in particular, for the leadership that you provided. The second thing was representing CRPD at the California Association of Parks and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members. I attended their, I listened on in to their executive board meeting. And one of the biggest things was, I had mentioned the last time, was that there was going to be a change in leadership. The new executive director that has replaced Jim Simpson is called Mr. Paul Romero. I do know that he's, he's doing a very good job at trying to beef up and really go on towards membership, because that's been their challenge. I do know that there, I believe, is going to be some kind of a promotion where they were going, they would give agencies that sign up opportunity to sign up for a year, pay the, I think it's a $250 a year fee, but give them 18 months of, for it to live out through. And so that, I wanted to make sure that we were aware of that. Also, they are looking for programs, projects to consider for award, award-winning. They do have a scholarship program, which maybe, I don't know, maybe our Director of Parks and Services might find useful to look into, to see if she may be able to do it for some of her leaders, youth leaders. And so that's, that's pretty much what I have to report.
Thank you. Secretary Lineback?
Yes, I was able to attend at least the last part of the holiday party, and I will just echo, you know, Director Reyes, the staff, morale just is so high. It's, you know, they really enjoy each other, and that is the best way to do great work, and you can really see it. You know, you can touch it. It's really visible. It's nice to see. And I did attend the RDAOB meeting on January 6th. It's the annual meeting to approve the next cycle of bond payments that are due and things of that sort. During that meeting, I did make a couple of inquiries, because I'm trying to make this be more than just, you know, a rubber stamp. Each of the agencies are submitting the maximum of $250,000 for administrative expenses, and you just see the budget, but you don't see the spending. So I did ask them to provide some historical data on how much administrative spending is going on. You really have no control over the bond payments that are due. They're due, you know, but maybe some of the other ancillary spending should be looked at by the Oversight Board, because that's an operative word there, oversight. And the other one is that apparently the city of Ileton, even though it's not related to this district, hasn't submitted any information to the county or the Oversight Board about payments that are due. We don't even know if they're making their payments. So, but there is a process in the state for penalizing non-compliant redevelopment agencies, so I asked if they could please look in and see if anything is being done by this particular city, who appear to be out of compliance with the requirements of this particular redevelopment dissolution process. That's my report.
Thank you. Vice Chair Sloan?
I also attended the holiday party on December 19th, and it was really fun. I enjoyed it. Everybody was happy. Everybody won something, it looked like. There were lots of little prizes for people. Was that the day we took the photograph, too? Took the photograph, I think. Or was that, oh, that was the other one? Okay, thanks, Gary. And... And on January 7th, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. And I'm, I'm really proud to say that finally, after I think about five years of being associated with this organization, that the middle schools are starting to get on board and interested at an age that we really weren't tapping, 13, 14-year-olds. It was kind of like a lot of our programs stop at certain ages. So I know that they are looking into possibly putting together a flag football league and looking for possible assistance from the CRPD. Doing some youth clinics. Those are things that we're also looking for, they're going to give you funding for, and hoping that the, maybe CRPD could help with some clinics through soccer, flag football, or softball. And so they're getting the funding from the, from the community enhancement. So that would be kind of, kind of good. Also, we have a new track club, RC, RCtrack.org is, it's a newly-formed track club in Rancho here. And so they've already had some discussions about a cross-country course at Dave Roberts Park. And they've had, I think, meetings with our district administrator and talking about the, the path and making sure that it doesn't disrupt any sprinklers or whatever. And the fact that maybe it might need aeration after meat. That was one thing that they don't know what it's going to be like. Someone mentioned if there were spikes on their shoes, it could act as aeration itself. But, and then on today, Director, Chair Danzil and myself were at the California Association of Recreation and Park District, C.A.R.P.D. board meeting. And we were finalizing the, the next conference up in South Lake Tahoe. And we're doing a lot of changes this year. We're going to be having the awards dinner will be in the middle, not, not at the end. And so that'll be interesting. We're going to have a theme. I think we're looking at Share the Vision and working with that 2020, which I guess everyone will be doing, but we'll see. We're going to have a lot of good, good breakout sessions. We're going to have the, the roundtable, the roundtables with the general managers, roundtables with the, the Board of the Directors, and then at the end have a roundtable with everybody so we can discuss what we've talked about and if there's any overlaps. And I think that'd be kind of good. And some of the legislative stuff that we were discussing, you know, of course, we're now heading into $13 an hour for minimum wage. So I know we prepared for that. And then we talked about AB5, which talks about whether it's a, a, an employee is independent contractor or should be considered an employee, a full-time employee, or what. And so I know that right now, the wording does not wholly prohibit the use of independent contractors. And I know the districts are concerned about that, that whole process. Another one we were talking about was, of course, if you remember in 2018, Prop 68 was passed, and it's promising about $185 million to be allocated per capita throughout California. And a lot of people have signed up for it. And I, of course, I had to make sure that our name was on that list. And we're still, everyone's waiting and waiting and waiting for them to come up with the actual date where that money's going to be delivered. And, and now I heard early 2020, but nothing is set in stone yet. They're just, I don't know what's, what's taking them so long. An interesting talk was about Senate Bill 13, which they're, they're trying to make it easier for people to pass a measure. Instead of having a two-thirds vote, maybe go down to a 50-51 or something like that. So 51%, which would be a lot easier to pass. So these are things that we're all keeping our eye on, and, and I'll let you know more. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So the rest of them have spoke for me. I, too, went to the all, the all-staff holiday party. It's always fun to get to see the majority of the staff together and, and, you know, just hear, hear their feelings on, on the district. And it always seems to be a positive, especially at that time of the year. And then CRPD today with Vice Chair Sloan. He covered 99% of it on his, so there's not much. I mean, the conference is coming up sooner than later, end of May again. So we'll still be in South Lake Tahoe. That is the end of my report. Let's go to item H2.
Thank you. Item H2A is to nominate and make appointments to board committees for the 2020 term. So as you know, in our policy, we currently have six existing standing committees. However, last year, we made amendments to the policy that allows, that remove the requirement to make appointments to all committees. So that gives us some flexibility there. The chairperson for the process is to make nominations, followed by voting by the full board. Alternates for standing committees may be designated by the board chairperson as necessary. And also Chair Danzil can create and directly appoint members to any ad hoc committees if desired. As you know, our most active committees last year were the Budget and Finance and District Policies, and this workload is projected to continue through 2020. And all meetings of the standing committees do conform to the Brown Act and are posted and agendized. And then on your staff report is motions if the board desires to make these appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. As somebody told me, they, they work at the pleasure of the chair. So my nominations for, for these, for standing committees because of the hard work, and I don't want to change things in the middle. I'd like to keep Director Reyes and Secretary Lineback on their two committees that they've been on, which is Budget and Finance and District Policies. Things have been well-run with the two of you there, and I'm afraid changing that in the middle, especially when we're getting ready to really ramp up, policy changes could affect, could affect things with a different set of eyes at it. Eventually, we all see it anyway. We have that chance at that point to make those decisions as a full board. But the way it's been going in, in committee right now, I feel comfortable with that. At this time, I do not foresee ad hocks, and I, I'm not going to appoint at this time to those. Last year, we only, we met with the school district one time. So I don't feel that we need to, at this point, set any members at that. But if it does come up, that's a call I can make at that, that particular time. So I would like to nominate Director Reyes and Secretary Lineback to the committees of Budget and Finance and District Policies.
Let's do one at a time if we can.
Okay.
Would you like to do Finance Committee first?
Finance Committee first? Do I need to read?
Second.
Go ahead.
I need a second? I do need a second.
I'll second.
A motion by Chair Danzil, second by Director Yearwood?
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzil?
Aye. And then on District Policies, Director Reyes and Secretary Lineback. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chair Danzil? Or motion by Chair Danzil, second by Director Reyes?
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzil?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Item I?
Thank you. Item I1 is the District-wide Monthly Progress Report for January, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you. So I'll go through some highlights for the month. So under the Clerk of the Board transitioning to by district elections, I know we had brought up that topic. It's been going on for about a year now, since we were trained at the last C.A.R.P.D. conference. So Clerk Jones and I had actually met with a resource that has already gone through that process. And the recommendation made was for us to start with a resolution, for us to proclaim or resolve the fact that we will be using the 2020 census data to drive the demographic study that needs to be done in order for us to move from a, a, at, at-large election to a district-wide election. So a resolution will be coming to the board within the next couple of months for us to resolve the fact that that's the way we're going to implement that change in the way we do elections. The next is the Annual Form 700 Filing. It's that time of year. Designated positions will receive email notifications, including the board, from Sacramento County that the 700 Form filing period has now opened. And this initiates the annual online filing process, which concludes on April 1st. So just be aware that that will be coming. And we'll obviously give you some ample notice for you to be able to do that. The District-wide Monthly Financial Notes, great news. Overall, targets are within budget, and we have a 2% increase in savings compared to previous months with no major concerns to report to date. Matt and I have been working with a cell tower company. We've done tours of different proposed sites throughout the district. And we're exploring the proposal that they have for us to consider. What we want to do, it's an interesting entrepreneurial way of receiving revenue. And we'll get back to you with a future report on that once we deem the offer is something that we would be comfortable with bringing to the board for your consideration. But it was kind of a, an interesting start to the new year with them approaching us instead of us approaching them, which was kind of maybe a sign of the times. The Cordova Community Pool Replacement Designs, all permits were received on December 20th. The notice inviting bids as advertised was in the Sacramento Bee and is, starting January 8th and also January 12th. And bids will be open on February 18th. Davy Trees removes the 20 trees from the future pool site between the December 23rd and January 7th in preparation for the pool contract to start. As of today, we had good news. Under the Grants area, we actually did receive the Grant for Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, the SHR-A Community Development Block Grant. They, we requested, actually, there's a typo there. We requested $26,630 for design of Rosemont Community Courts. And we received that award today. And so we will be moving forward with the design of the tennis courts that are currently there into more of a sports court. And a lot of that data has already been collected from those community outreach meetings, the Community Celebration Day at Rosemont. So we're super excited. Great news. It's already starting to happen where the grants are being awarded. And I'm very pleased. And once again, Christina James is just phenomenal to have on our staff. She's an excellent writer, and it's paying off for us. So thank you for park planning, especially Christina for that. The Fetish Bill Building Demolition is moving forward. The electrical plans are in progress. And actually, we received the permits for the electrical, I believe, today or on earlier this week. So we should be looking to break ground on the demolition of that building and repurposing that area in February. So more to come. Once that starts going, I will have a note out to the board so that they're aware of that. And we, of course, will go back out to the public that attended that community outreach meeting and let them know that that's starting. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jill for the Parks and Recreation Department report.
Good evening. At Veterans Park, drinking fountains. The park staff are providing our park users with one brand-new drinking fountain. And then we poured new concrete pathways to both drinking fountains in the park. So they look great. If you have a chance to stop by, ADA accessible, which is wonderful. We appreciate that. At the Hagan Community Park, in preparation for the pool project, we did need to move the feral cat shelters. Just in case you're out there wondering where they're located, you can still see them. They're right in the vicinity of where the old feral cat shelters were. And then we're going to leave those, you know, cat, feral cat shelters where they are after the pool project. We feel like that's a better location for them. So just, just in case you're out there and you see that they've been moved, it's because of the pool project. Over at the Mather Sports Center, the gym floor has been repaired. We had some cracks in the gym floors, some boards that were, were coming up. So Gary Atchison has worked with a flooring company to come out. They repaired those floorboards, sanded them down. They look fantastic. And then we did have to repaint the two basketball keys. We painted them purple again, and then we put some seal coats on top. It looks, it looks amazing. We're excited for the flooring every year to get some, you know, seal coating on it so that we can maintain the integrity of that floor moving forward. And we're ready for our spring basketball league to start. So exciting times over at the Mather Sports Center. And then finally, in your packets tonight, you have our new recreation guide for the spring/summer. Excited. Katie left for the night, but kudos to Katie and all the staff for putting this together. You know, it's, it's quite the process for us to, to get all the information. But what's really excited about this guide is, of course, all the pictures, the amazing pictures. But we also have 20 new programs and opportunities inside of this guide. So a shout-out to the staff that works here for working with our community to offer these amazing programs. Our community is very lucky to have hard-working staff that really care about the offerings that, that we have. So enjoy. I think it's pretty amazing. The cover is amazing. Just like Rick said, if you, you know, if you go out to White Rock, it, it's just, it's, it's a beautiful. I love that bucket. I'm still going to, one day, one day, I'm going to
I have to go under it.
get dumped underneath a bucket. Maybe this summer's the summer. So enjoy. It should be hitting mailboxes really soon. Hopefully, you know, this week sometime, but of course, depending on the post office. But they're all in our recreation centers, in our community centers, as well as the district office if somebody wants to pick up a guide. But they're there for you, so excited about that. And then for the special event invitation, this Saturday is the tree planting out at the Rosemont Community Park. They had a sign-up. It's already sold out. So there should be lots of people there to help volunteer to plant the trees. So if you're interested tree planting, 8:45 a.m. to noon. Tammy will be out there as our CRPD representative. Hope to see you guys out there. Over at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, they're celebrating the Lunar New Year Celebration on Wednesday, January 22nd at 11:30 a.m. And then Mardi Gras Party over at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center on Wednesday, February 26th at 11:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item J, informational items.
Thank you. Item J1 is Articles, Correspondence, and Public Outreach. We had three articles and one piece of correspondence there. And then item J2 is Your Calendars. And I just wanted to point out the Board Retreat, which is on January 27th.
Thank you, ma'am. And Director Reyes?
Chair Danzil, I did see in the Style Magazine another article that mentioned Claim, Claim Stake. It says the Claim Stake Brewing Company is slated to be the new concessionaire at the Cordova Golf Course. So that's, that's exciting. It's coming out. It's right there. So I thought I'd bring that out.
March.
This is the, no, this is the one that comes from Folsom, that area.
Do I hear any other comments, questions, concerns, anything for next month that we need to pop up? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.